I'd like to call the order, the City of Isani City Council Committee of a Whole Meeting for Tuesday, March 17th. If we could all rise for pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All council members are present minus Councilman Collison. He did make us aware that he would not be attending this evening. Public comment? Is that new on here, Ms. Wood? I've never seen that.
Mayor, yes, we did add that in case anyone did want to speak in any of these agenda items.
Oh. Well, how transparent of us. I like it. Welcome, Chief Jankovic.
Thank you. I would like to be added to this if possible. I'd like to provide an annual report for the fire department. Just take about ten minutes if you have time.
We okay with that, Ms. Wood?
Yes, we are.
You want to do it now, Chief?
Absolutely.
Batter up.
So I won't go through this report in deep detail. Would you like those there? But, yes, instead I'll just abbreviate it so that you folks can all take a gulp and look it over as you see fit.
That's a pretty cool picture. Does he really make you guys sit in a room like that?
Yeah, that's what it means, yeah. So, yeah, good, good point. The picture on the front is one of our Level One Training Burns. So, a lot of times, we get houses donated to us to use for fire department training, and this is what it looks like. A Level One burn is one of our entry-level type live burns.
Push a button on there, Chief. Thank you.
Yes, sir. It's an entry-level live burn where we bring the firefighters in after they've completed their firefighter basic training. We set them down on the floor and we start a set, what should we call a set, on fire in front of them. So the fire is basically pallets, straw, and cardboard. There's nothing hazardous in it. We set them down and we start that set on fire so that we can show them how the heat feels in their gear and just kind of orientate them with the whole situation. We allow them turns on the nozzle to knock it down, let the fire grow, show them vent patterns, et cetera. So, that's what that is. Looking inside, this is basically the same report that I have made for the last several years. So the first page is our current firefighters as of 12/31. The years of service is how many full years of service each firefighter has. So if a firefighter is on for eleven and a half months, they get a zero. It's no offense, but this is meant to show complete years of service. Add them all up, it's 160 total years of service. If you average all those 30 firefighters, it averages out to five years of service. The next page, Page Two, is our total run volumes for the entire fire district in 2019. So you'll see we responded to 948 total calls. In the City of Isani, we responded to 404. You can figure the rest out from there. The bottom graph is our nine-year fire call volume history, so just showing some trending. The next page, Pages Three and Four.
I don't mean to stop you, Chief. But these aren't, these aren't fire calls, these are medical included, correct?
That's correct.
Run calls.
These are runs. These are all of our calls in total.
Okay. You have them listed as fire calls, that's why I was asking.
Well, fire department calls, I guess. I could, I could retitle that next year. Thanks for pointing that out. The next page, I will show you that these are the descriptions of all of the 948 calls we went on. So you can see that we went on 52 fire calls where there was actually fire, 679 rescue and emergency medical service incidents, which if you read the next column, it totals 71.6 percent of our calls were medical, so on and so forth. The next page shows our training, would be Page Five. These are all of the training courses that the firefighters were offered during the year. Some of them are mandated, OSHA mandates, some of them are monthly drills, and some of them are additional trainings that we do during the months throughout the year. So not all firefighters have been through all of these in 2019, but the majority of them have. The next page, Page Six, is a summary of our service area. You'll see there the City of Isani, we service all of it, which has an estimated population, according to the county assessor, of 6,031, and then estimated valuation of $486,620,700. The next page, Seven, is a breakdown of our financials as of December 31st, 2019. So it shows our budget, grant income that we were awarded throughout the year, some donations, some goods donations that we received from the rodeo association, and then quite a few different accounts. You'll see some capital replacement certificates at multiple banks in Isani and Amenco Water Rescue Savings. Those CDs are going to be cashed out this year. They've been purchased over the years with our budget money and set aside for a new fire engine that we will be taking delivery of in July of this year. The pictures are a grass truck project that we built in-house. We were awarded a grant from the DNR to assist with the purchase of a grass fire truck, and we were also able to purchase a truck from the DNR through a program that they have. And then we used some donations from the rodeo association and assembled the rest of the truck in-house, and that truck is stationed out at our Station Two and in service right now. Page Eight shows our capital assets, so all of the equipment that we own throughout the three stations, other than Station One, which is leased from the City of Isani, all of this equipment is owned free and clear, which we're pretty happy about. The next page is specific to the City of Isani, the next two pages, Pages Nine and Ten. So if you're curious about what run types, the 404 runs we went on in the City of Isani, there is a complete breakdown of the different categories of the runs we responded to. And then on the back page, Page Eleven, is what we, or sorry, what the City of Isani will contribute towards our 2020 budget. So the report is a 2019 report, but the last page is talking about the current year to show that our 2020 budget, for example, is $632,785. The City of Isani will contribute $238,077.52 towards that. And then some comparisons, the City of Isani's percent of our total budget is 38 percent, and the City of Isani's runs account for 46 percent of our total runs. So you're paying 38 percent of our budget and you're accounting for 46 percent of our runs. And then the pictures, they all have some little notes by them. I think you can figure them out. The double whammy briefly is from a few fires that we had in the same night last year. We were tested pretty vigorously when it was 35 degrees below zero. We had two fires which overlapped in the same night. So it was something to go in the books, so I thought it deserved a picture in our annual report.
Should've showed the helmet, that was priceless. The frozen helmet, yeah.
There was probably an inch or so of ice on the helmet. That was a lot of...
Did you have to call it mutual aid that night?
Yes, sir, we did. We had St. Francis at our first one, and then when we got the second one, we were still in the first fires inside the structure doing what we call mop-up, and they called us to one that was out in Oxford. So we called Linwood and Stacy Land Fire immediately to assist us with that fire. It was quite the night. We slept good.
I bet you did.
In the morning, right?
Yeah, right, exactly. We watched, the sun didn't come up, we watched...
Any questions or comments by the council?
I have a kind of a question, Mr. Jankovic. What do you, what's the fire district's policy going to be down with this COVID-19 virus?
That's a good question. So we started out by loosely amongst the memberships having an agreement that we were not going to come in contact with somebody who reported having COVID-19. We had an agreement amongst the firefighters that we would respond to the area, and if the person needed our interventions, we would then be staged in the area to make ourselves quickly accessible. We have learned quite a bit in the last few days, and we've taken our response one step further and limited ourselves from even responding to those, what we would consider non-critical EMS calls. In the eyes of protecting our first responders and their families to the fullest extent as this takes its course, we are going to not be as exposed to it.
You're not going to be at the front lines like you normally would.
Exactly. A big piece of what we, we do is EMS calls, as you can see in our reports. We piggyback the ambulance at a lot of our calls. Because of our location, we, as first responders, are able to be on scene first, and we all realize the value in that if somebody is having some life-threatening, life-endangering situation. We have notified dispatch and sheriff, who oversees our county dispatch, that we will continue to respond to those critical EMS calls. If somebody is unresponsive and in dire need of immediate interventions, we will respond in our typical fashion. But if the person is not complaining of a life-threatening situation, then we are going to stand by at quarters and allow EMS, who is Alina Lakes Region and North Ambulance, transport their patients as they normally would without the assistance of fire rescue in our area. We have approached Alina for assistance with PPE, protective gear for our firefighters, like masks and additional equipment that we normally don't carry in our rigs, and they were unable to provide it. The market is, is struggling to keep up with demand right now, as everybody's heard on, on TV and radio. So we have no real source of that additional equipment that we were not prepared to need. So we're going to leave it up to the ambulance providers and their contingency plans to handle that.
That sounds wise. From what I've heard in emails Ms. Woods is sending out, there is no cases yet in Isani.
In Isani County, I believe there are not, correct?
So, that's a good thing.
Not as of 16 minutes ago when I left my office, that's how close I've been watching it, so...
Yeah.
None yet.
None yet.
Let's hope it stays that way, but...
Let's hope, for the sake of our elderly and those in our community that are most susceptible to it, yeah, I pray that we don't, although I have a feeling it's coming. So hopefully, everybody is strict and follows the CDC guidelines and shelters and doesn't frequent those highly populated areas and takes care of this, and we'll talk about it someday.
Fair enough. Any other questions for the chief? Thanks, Chief. You're always very detailed in your report.
All right, thank you.
Highly appreciated.
My pleasure.
Yep, good job. Thank you. Thanks, Chief.
We'll move on to the committee meeting items. Number one is a public works update. Ms. Wood?
Thank you, Mayor and Council Committee. So from Matt Sylvester, Public Services Director for Streets, they have their early spring has left us with 300 tons of salt on hand, which is good because that does carry into the next year. Doors were posted in February for tree trimming, and that list is completed. Snow was hauled from busy intersections and cul-de-sacs back in January with proper notifications. Pothole patching, as I'm sure you've seen on your way in here on First Avenue, has begun. We did get, as a side note, information that those plants may not be opening with, in lieu of response for COVID-19, so that may not continue as had been hopeful, but we will do what we can. Crews have been out doing yard repairs from plow damage. Storm, clearing brush and storm ponds has begun and will continue as time permits. Public Works has taken advantage of warmer weather and has began street sweeping, which is great for the storm sewers, they don't get plugged with that sand. Crews have cleared storm drains as the snow melts, and the compo site will be opening on April 21st. For sewer, the MPCA issued a draft permit for the wastewater treatment facility with some minor changes to what we had in previous permitting. The biggest change being that the total phosphorus levels will be a 12-month moving total instead of a 12-month calendar total. The total phosphorus level, though, will remain at 908 kilograms per year. Public Works began working on the wastewater treatment facility filter under drain piping, which was approved by council just recently. First round flushing of area loose valves was completed, and routine maintenance in the pre-treat building was completed. For water, staff has performed annual routine maintenance on the Max machine, as well as filter backwash tanks, and chlorox, the chlorine piping was replaced in the water treatment plant as well. For parks, Progressive Moore was purchased from Minnesota Equipment, which was per the CIP plan, as well as a mosquito fogger was purchased, and they have that down at the shop as well. Reports completed, we have a lot of reports in the public services realm that gets done at the beginning of the year. Four of them are the DNR Water Conservation Report, the Tier Two Report for Homeland Security, the Solid Waste Report, and the Water Conservation Report. Any questions that I can answer?
Can you tell me what that means, total phosphorus remaining at 908 kilograms? Does that mean that no matter what happens, you dump 908 kilograms of phosphorus in the sewer or wherever it goes?
So what that number is, is we are allotted 908 kilograms per year of phosphorus that could be discharged into the Rome River. So we make sure that our composite sampling that we take every couple, twice a month, I believe it is, that that doesn't add up too much. So we are usually well, way below this level, sometimes even by half to three-quarters of that amount.
Cool. Thank you.
Any other questions by the council?
If somebody has a yard repair that needs to be done, who do they contact? They just call the city and ask for Public Works or...
They should ask for Matt Sylvester, or they could email him as well, and he will add it to the list, definitely.
Any other questions? All right, let's move on to E2, Housing Study Update. Ms. Wood?
All right, I have an update from Sheila, as directed by council. When we had gone through goal setting, was to look at potentially updating our housing plan because it was pretty outdated, and that does help us to get projects. Sheila wanted to provide an update to just let you know that she's not going forward with looking for any kind of quotations because she got word that the Humphrey School Student Group was maybe doing an e-central study that would encompass our city, and it would be free. So she's working with them to see if that's going to happen before we move forward spending any fun, funding to update that study.
I don't know about you, gentlemen, but I like that four-letter word.
I do, too.
Then we wait. E3, let's move on to that item, the delinquent charges on utility account. Mr. Becker?
So basically, I got a request from a utility customer requesting that a late charge on their account be waived. This particular account is, has been billed semi-annually for just stormwater, right? There's no water sewer charges there, and what was relayed to me was is that the billing period dates listed on the postcard did not match the actual billing period. Therefore, the customer didn't feel they should have to pay it, and that the late fee should be waived.
But from my understanding, there was a little blip on our end?
Yes. Going back, it looks like on those, on those particular bills, the semi-annual bills for stormwater, since we changed the billing period to match the calendar month back in November of 2017, since then, our utility billing clerk had been choosing a different template in the software, so it didn't import the correct dates. The billings themselves were correct. They were going to the correct addresses, they were applied to the correct accounts. There was no errors in that regard. But at this time, here, some two years later, two and a half years later, that was, that was noticed by one customer.
So what's this customer requesting?
At this time, formally, he's requesting that the council be aware of that issue with the billing software.
Which has been fixed?
Which we believe we have a fix for, and we won't really know until we do the next set of semi-annual bills in May, and we'll run it, but shouldn't be an issue. And otherwise, he's seeking that the late fee be waived.
And how much is the late fee?
$5. He just, he had just met the minimum because it was just the stormwater charge, so the $5 minimum on that.
You think that's reasonable? I mean, sounds reasonable.
If it's just a $5, how much, has he paid the bill other than the late fee?
No.
Pay the bill, get the bill paid immediately, as far as I'm concerned, then waive the $5, but it's not going to continue.
I would concur.
I mean, as long as he pays that bill immediately, if he's going to drag it out, then as far as I'm concerned, he's going to have to pay it. I mean, we're going to give him the benefit of the doubt, but he needs to take care of the bill immediately.
So, so the consensus would be let him know that you fixed the problem, and you believe it'll be fixed from here forward. You pay the bill, we'll waive the charge.
Maybe, maybe give him to the end of the week to get good...
Absolutely, yep.
Or end of the month. I mean, he might not be home or something, who knows with this coronavirus going on. I'm just saying to the end of the month.
Which is only a week and a half. End of the month, that's more than fair.
Yep.
Yeah, I think it's fair. I'm not trying to be difficult, I'm just trying to think about everything everybody's going through right now, so...
I hear what you're collecting chicken. All right, let's move on to E4, the food truck fees. Ms. Wood?
Thank you, Mayor. So as you recall likely, we did approve an ordinance allowing food trucks within the City of Isani. With that, we need to establish some fees to add into our fee schedule, and following suit with matching our ordinance to Cambridge's city policy, their fees are $25 per day, $75 per month, and $200 per seasonal up to six months per food truck. Staff is looking for direction to move forward with putting this in our fee schedule.
I'd like to look at Mr. Gordon on this. I'm sure he's paid some of these fees when he's out in North Dakota.
I did, yeah. These are pretty fair, I think, yeah. I mean, it's, it's, per day is kind of a lot, but you're making it fair by the month, and then for the season is, is real fair. So one question I would have, though, is like if they come in for the street dance, and they're going to be here like three days, the street dance, they charge like $50, I think, to be a part of those, I think it was $50 maybe for all three, or, I can't remember exactly, but is that, is this fee going to go above and beyond that, or it's included in what they pay to be a part of the street dance?
Good question. And actually, I believe it's $50 per day for the, for the street dances, unless you were a nice City of Isani business, and then it was $25. It would be reduced to this. We would no longer have a separate application and fee for the street dances like we do. We had that because that's only where they were allowed with that special event permit. That would kind of, that would dissolve, and it would be applicable to this.
So we'll facetiously speak here, if Jimmy's Pizza wanted to do the $200 for the year, would that include he could go anywhere in the city that was permitted and the street dances?
Yes.
Absolutely. I think that's, I think that's fair.
I think that's fair. That $25 a day, you think, is a little steep, Councilman Gordon?
Well, only, no, not really. I mean, it's fine. Yeah, I mean, it's...
But the thing is, they're not going to do a day.
Because then you're just, you're just going to get the $75 one, and that's...
Yeah.
So it's just more pushing people to, if you're going to come here, then come here for more days, you know, so, no, it's, I think it's fine.
I would, I would, I would concur, too. I'd say we'll just mimic what Cambridge has and keep going forward.
And for those who have been doing the food trucks, I mean, they're either seeing a reduction from, at the special event, or they're getting it reduced, or staying the same or reduced.
I don't know, that would make sense, get the $200 one.
They'd be smarter to spend the $75 for the month. I mean, that's, and that's giving them the opportunity to save some money then.
I imagine the only people doing the 25 would be those coming in for like a, a street dance or something like that.
Versus if you're a business here, you could go anywhere you wanted in the city and the street dances, and that $200 would make sense to me.
How about as far as the farmer's market? Do, do we get street truck or food trucks in there?
We don't know yet. We've never had this. This will be the first year, so we'll find out.
But I mean, previous even though...
No.
Oh, no.
They had the ice cream, the ice cream truck was there.
Oh, yeah, yeah, the ice cream truck. I did forget about that. But I think they just paid the entry for the farmer's market, didn't they?
I'd have to look, I guess I don't know. When I ran the farmer's market, that wouldn't have happened.
But we could get more now that the food truck ordinance is in place. I mean, fingers crossed we even have the farmer's market at this rate.
Thanks, Ms. Woods.
Thanks, Ms. Wood. Let's move on to E5, the fire district lease discussion. Mr. Becker?
So, excuse me. If I, if I remember correctly, the mayor had requested that this be put onto the agenda with the idea that we wanted to address moving the fire district lease payment to a dollar. As you can see, I've put together a little bit of information on that.
Just a little bit.
A little bit. My concern about moving to a dollar isn't so much moving to a dollar in and of itself. My concern would be the timing of it. I think we have a lot of other projects that we need to get straightened out, that we need to understand how the puzzle pieces are going to fit before we know if that's going to work out. If, if we look at, what I'm getting at here is, is that we're not entirely certain how things are going to go with the liquor store. It's possible...
Because we haven't had that study done yet.
Yeah, it's possible, right, that we might look at that study and say, gee whiz, we, we ought to get John a new store. If we do that, there's how you make that happen in and of itself, but then that also would leave us with another facility on, on County Row Five that we need to, we need to do something with. It might make sense then, if the fire department is looking for that, their entire building, not to have to share it with the PD, to move the PD over. But then we also need funds to make that former liquor store into a building that is functional for PD. Not only is there the funding between all of those projects, but there's also the timing. If we say that the police department needs a new site, whether it's an existing building or a new building, there's got to be some planning in there. And if, especially if we say that the fire, or the police department is going to need a new building, there's, I mean, there's really only two ways to get them a brand-new building. One is to wait somewhere between 11 and 15 years and save our money and get to that point where we could pay cash, or we issue debt much earlier than that 11 to 15-year time horizon, but then we will absolutely see the tax rate go up significantly. Some of, so we've talked about this before, and I don't know that I've articulated it particularly well, but the third page in the packet on item E5 looks a little bit like this, and it's, it's just kind of the tail-end summary of what we had talked about at goal-setting. And really, what I've added to this here under, under, for the police building is to, kind of a, two scenarios, right? One is to say PD needs a new building. If we decide that PD needs a new building, there are two choices, two paths. One is to save money and be, you know, 11 years out, or to issue debt. And debt could start at any time, we're ready to go through with construction, issue those bonds, but then those payments would continue 15 years. I would say, based on my best guess and my best estimates, would be that if we save, we can probably keep that tax rate going up at a less than five points, right? So we were sitting at 61 percent here, we held that steady now the last two budget cycles. Adding that additional money in probably means going up just less than five points, so it's not a really significant change. But if we're going to go and issue debt, we're definitely going to have more than a five, five-point increase. There's not really any way around that. And ultimately, that difference really comes down to the difference between... And ultimately, that difference really comes down to the difference between earning interest on the money you're saving along the way versus paying interest on that money along the way. And over a 15 year period, that ends up getting to be quite a difference. The other option for the police for the police is picking from option two. And in that scenario, you have to say, all right, if we need a new liquor store, again, there's only two ways to do it. You either save money or you or you borrow money. To be honest, if we if we if we say we're going to save money for a new liquor store, we're we're never really going to do that without disrupting the general the transfer to the general fund. If we do that, we're talking about a tax rate that goes up by 10 points or more. If we issue debt, those would be enterprise fund revenue debt bonds. That would not affect the tax rate. And but I wouldn't I wouldn't throw my weight behind that unless I felt confident that we were going to be able to do that and maintain that general fund transfer. Then if we've got that new store, then it's about rehabbing the existing liquor store to make it suitable for the police department. Again, two paths. You either save that money and 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 find the right timeline based on what we think that the the police need. Or again, you issue debt. If we save the money and we get the right purchase price from the fire district on the existing building, I think you can keep that tax rate relatively unchanged. So there's kind of in the end, there gets to be kind of a clear path. If the council says police needs new digs, we want the fire district to have control of the the current building that they're in. And we want taxes to be low. We want to maintain that low tax rate. There ends up really being only one path that we can try to shoot for. With all of that in mind, at this time, Josie and I are looking for permission to start to talk to the fire district, you know, to speak with Al and start to try to hammer out what kind of framework this might be. Because right now, I don't know when the fire district wants to take on the building. I don't know if they want to pay for it, how they want to pay for it. I don't know what they think the right price is. There's there's some some details that I can't be sure of.
One thing I can tell you that with discussion with fire district is that the chief would like to put to keep that $36,000 a year that he's budgeting towards the lease right now, keep that as towards down payment. And, you know, still working out the lease with them to making it feasible for them also. I mean, we look at if we're if we're out of that $36,000 a year, we're paying 40% of that. So we're paying ourselves to pay ourselves back. Makes no sense to me. It's ludicrous. I'd rather see it going to them purchasing it at least than them them leasing that.
But there are other factors to take into account here. I mean, we do have to move a police department and we have to pay for that.
But it's not in in that discussion.
And don't get me wrong. I hope everybody here knows that I'm very much behind our fire department and our police department. Public safety is very important to me and and the residents of Isani. But I'm not going to I'm not going to stop one of us.
No, but if you.
Even across the board.
Even if you look at this, he's looking at something in 2022. That's two years from now, you know? And then that's the next thing.
I just asked Chief Jankovic to to jump back up here because maybe you can answer Mr. Becker's questions. Or I mean, I don't have any problem with I don't know if you guys do, but turning it over to say Josie and and Mike can talk to to Al about this and and hammer out the framework. I don't I don't mind that at all.
Yeah, I don't either.
I mean, I I trust both of them. I trust they're going to do the best for the city of Isani, the police department and the fire department.
Maybe maybe, Mr. Becker, you answered. You you mentioned this and I just missed the terminology. But did you talk about lease to own? And I don't know if that's in your radar or not.
Yeah, we yeah, we discussed it at the goal setting meeting. It's it's been discussed one other time. But yeah, that is I mean, that's one option that we have for transferring ownership is to say, all right, look, the fire district had been paying a dollar. That changed in 2015, right? So there's some money that's been going coming to the city. And where are we at? You know, 15th 2015 through 2019, the city had collected 163,000. You know, one option is to say, all right, that's that's like a credit toward toward the purchase. Or we simply say, all right, you know, what is the, you know, we talk more about what is the future dollars going to be? In either case, that, you know, the fire district has given the city money, right? And it's really about how they see it and how we account for it. But yeah, that I mean, that's an option is to say, all right, the the fire district, it fits their budget to continue to make payments for four years or eight years or whatever that their timeline is. And then it's about figuring out what is that right number? Maybe it's 36,000, maybe it's more, maybe it's less. But I think we've got to have those conversations to be able to figure that out.
You want to fill in some of those blanks?
Yeah, I think this is a very complex discussion and it's going to take more than tonight before we can hammer it all out. But I think we have this order of events a little bit out of place. When we talked about changing the lease back to a dollar, what it previously was prior to 2015, step two of that was that we would maybe someday take ownership of that building. But to get back to the original root of this discussion is, as the agenda item shows, the lease discussion. And we had talked at the fire board meeting about bringing that back to the $1 per year. The reason reasons why it was $1 per year, I think, have been forgotten. And I apologize for being unprepared tonight. But what led up to this was that when that building was built, and Mr. Becker, I don't know if you have any history on the finances when that building was built, but how it's been explained to me is the townships contributed towards the expense of building that building. And when the substations were built, when our stations two and three were built, the the townships contributed sums of money towards those buildings as well. When station two was built, the townships that supported that station or that that station covered, they budgeted and contributed extra money, just like they did out at station three. And to my understanding, the value that the city was receiving for us to reside or or use the station one building, the value in that was offset by allowing us to simply lease that building for a dollar. With that lease came responsibilities that we had to maintain, responsibilities that were above and beyond the traditional lease, where we would maintain basically our entire side of the building. Any maintenance that needed to be done, any improvements, that were those were our responsibilities. In 2015, when we renegotiated our lease, some of that got a little mixed up. We started to pay a a going rate, we'll say, for the lease, although the maintenance side of things did not follow suit. So we discussed at the fire district to revisit this. And the idea was brought up, maybe we could go back to the old $1 per year and continue our old maintenance ways and we would stay in that building. And the next step of that would be discussion if the PD is outgrowing their area, we are as well. And maybe somewhere down the road, we could purchase that building. And the next step was maybe we continue to make our payments that we're currently paying and apply that towards purchase principle. So there's, excuse me, there's a lot of different moving parts to this discussion. But I think the if if the PD isn't ready, if the city isn't ready to start looking at the real picture of where to move the PD to if the fire department did take over that whole building, then the root discussion that we're here for, I believe, is to consider bringing that lease back to what it was originally designed for. And I guess in respect of the the townships that already contributed towards that building to not to not make them lease a building that they've already invested money in.
I'm going to agree with the mayor. I think we should turn this over to Ms. Woods and Mr. Becker.
I agree with that.
Allow allow them to figure this out and talk with the chief. That's I mean, are you comfortable with meeting with those?
Absolutely, yeah.
But the whole the whole point of it is is what Mr. Jankovic is saying. You know, this this discussion is the lease discussion, not purchasing discussion right now, leasing discussion. And that's what I'm referring to.
Right, but what I'm referring to is when it comes to purchasing, turn it over to these two.
Absolutely.
I think both.
Now, when it comes to when it comes to leasing, oh, no. When it comes to leasing, I think we as a council need to come to an agreement. I don't think there's any anybody on this council that's going to disagree with when that was shifted to what it normally or what it used to be is a dollar to.
36,000.
To 30, yeah, I didn't have the I'm sitting here trying to read as the chief was talking. I was trying to find that exact amount. Why was that even put in place? Because to me, this looks like vendetta. That's what it looks like to me, but I could be wrong.
It kind of turned into that about a year later.
And that's what it turned into. And the whole thing was, and I'm going to be totally honest with you, Mr. Gordon's going to vouch for me. When you lease a building, the building structure is the owner of the property's responsibility. If they make changes inside that lease or they build walls for offices or whatever, that becomes the leasies' responsibility. But the structure of that building, and it's gray about heating systems and cooling systems, but the structure of that building, exterior of that building, is the owner of that building's responsibility. It is not the leasies' responsibility. And they got dumped on where it became their responsibility in that lease. I myself have argued that from day one on that lease. I did this never been a fair lease that way in those terms.
I'm not going to disagree. It looks like we're stooping the fire department, bottom line.
But that's why I am pretty adamant about turning it back to a dollar lease. And I'm guaranteeing you, we do have another board member on the fire district is in in the audience right now, that they would be more than well, more than willing to go to the dollar lease and the fire department would take care of that building, as per said.
I believe that wholeheartedly. I think if we went to that dollar lease, you wouldn't we'd never hear a gripe out of you. You'd just keep taking care of it. And then as far as the purchase of that building goes, I think you need to sit down with Ms. Wood and and Mr. Becker.
And I I hardly agreed. And that needs to get our footing holds on what we're going to do, long term plan. And that doesn't mean that.
Once that study comes out, then we know even more.
Yep, and once that study comes out, then they can sit down and talk it over with with Mr. Jankovic. So he can come back to the fire district board, bring it, present it to the board, what what we're all looking at and start putting those marbles in play. We can't we can't just say, okay, we're going to give the PD a new building tomorrow and build a new liquor store tomorrow. That ain't going to happen. This is not a two this is not a one night turnaround. It's it's a couple of years in in going. And then again, the fire district at this point, if they know that that this is a possibility coming up, the fire district can look in in their own mind and saying, let's start putting X amount of dollars into the budget for the purchase of the building in the future. We're not saying tomorrow, not saying next month, we're not saying next year, but in the future. But as of this discussion.
Or it is a possibility for you to say, our lease is $1, but we're still going to give you 36,001 dollars.
Right.
And you keep that money for the purchase of ours. So we're kind of acting as a bank, so to speak.
Right.
We're keeping your $36,000 and just keep tallying and tallying and tallying.
Correct.
And then that money would go towards your purchase.
Yep, that was one of the things we.
Different story, different discussion you can have with Mr. Becker and Ms. Wood.
Yep.
As far as that lease agreement goes, I'm not in disagreement. I think it should go back to what it originally was. And that was a dollar. I think it was put in place as a vendetta. I mean, all all information that I've I've found here, I.
I will I will.
Two and two is not equaling four.
I will say this, I was on the fire department at that time when that building was built. Matter of fact, the fire department was in the building behind the post office in that little block building back there.
The green one.
Huh?
The green building, yeah.
That was the fire department. We had three trucks and then the rest sat outside. And when you had to take one truck, you had to move one out of the way because it's not the one you needed. But and I do know, talking to Mr. Pagel over the years, because he was all involved in that when this building went down, that was kind of in a nutshell how that lease agreement came about. That's originally how that dollar lease came in effect.
And not to drag this out more, I apologize. I know you guys are busy, but we've I think we've been pretty good stewards of that over the years. I remember when I first came into the office in 2010, we used to pay an annual roof fee. We would pay back for improvements made to the roof. We've also had some street assessments in our budget in the past. So we haven't just paid the dollar and and not held up our end of the deal, I think.
You've been a you've been a very fair tenant.
Thank you.
We can put it that way.
Appreciate it.
And and you've done your due diligence on whatever, you know, whether it was streets or roof or or what have you. You've you've done your fair share. And it's it's bottom line is all I'm going to say to you is that screwing the fire department does not need to happen anymore. There's no vendetta on this council.
Well, we appreciate that very much.
I'd like to say I'd like to say that we go back to dollar lease.
I would concur.
But we'd have to, if I'm not wrong, Ms. Wood, we have to bring that into council as a vote.
Yeah, Councilmember Lundin, so what we would do is probably if you would give direction for myself to work with Chief Jankovic to take a look at, we would need to make another an amendment. So this would be the third amendment to the lease agreement to bring back that dollar. And I think that maybe we've had some back and forths between us and just in conversations like that communal area because it had defined that it would be like a shared 50 50 split in a different draft that never got approved. That maybe we want to clarify that at this time too. And we can work on that. It's kind of like the it was going to happen, that one never got approved. So we want to work together. So you're not paying all of it, we're not paying all of it. So maybe we can clarify that at the same time and then we'll come forward to council.
I think what I'd like to see happen is not only the fire district, but the city lays all their cards on the table. We get thing everything out in the air. We end this and and move forward as a team from here forward. There's no vendetta here. I know there's no vendetta in that in that fire board because I've been there, used to be. But there also used to be vendetta on this end too, so but it's no more. So for us to lay all of our cards on the table, get everything out in the air and move forward here, you can talk to Mr. Becker, talk to Ms. Wood on this purchase agreement, the lease agreement. But I I'm I'm behind Councilman Lundin and I think it should go back to a dollar. I don't know what you two gentlemen are thinking.
Well, I'm going to go back to, I think we should explore all avenues. I think there's no use to go back to a dollar and then later say, well, we're going to do a lease to purchase. That's why I would like to have those two work out the whole thing. If we're going to do a purchase to buy, we might as well move forward with that right away. What do you think, Mr. Becker?
That's kind of what I had envisioned as well, that we might find ourselves in a situation where we go through the legal cost of redrafting the, you know, putting forth an amendment to the lease, move it to a dollar to then maybe four or six months later to have now arrived at yet another scenario where, you know, we might end up being kind of the, you know, end up being the bank in a in some kind of a financial arrangement.
Yeah, but even if that was the case, he's still paying a dollar lease, but he's giving you 36,001 dollars. So that $1 is going towards his lease agreement. That $36,000 is sitting as we act as their bank in escrow. There you go. So if if that is the agreement, then then so be it. Then he pays 36,001 dollar.
I'm going to I'm going to go out on a limb here and I'm going to tell you right now, even though we get that that liquor store study back, it isn't going to happen in 2020.
No.
So that's why we want to go back to this now.
I get I get that as well, but they've already started. If we're going to say we're going to apply what they paid so far towards buying the building, I mean, what's the fire department's view on that? Do you go on to continue paying a higher amount and work out a purchase agreement at the same time? Or do you want to go back to a buck? What's your view?
Personally, I'd like to continue to pay towards that principle. I would I would personally, that's what I would.
But that's personally, and no disrespect, you still have to go back to the fire board.
Absolutely. Our chair is is right here. I don't know if he wants to come up and speak to this at all.
I have to look at what you're talking about for sure. But I do have one comment to make because we really appreciate the attitude of council. Well, the fire board really does. I just think that the case. Being able to work out this is something that we really want to do also. Like I said, lay it on the table.
Just get all of our cards on the table. Let's clear the air and move forward.
Because there is a fire district meeting tomorrow night.
Yeah.
So this will probably be come up in the discussion. So I mean, personally, if we just went back to signing the dollar lease at this moment, that's our intent, which isn't going to happen tonight. We can't do it tonight. It's got to. to go out, it'll probably be next month, if we meet, you know, so, I mean, that'd be the consensus that we can go back with the fire district meeting with.
And we could, yeah, I, I.
There's too many, there's too many things that have to fall in line to, to make a, a whole decision at this moment.
Right.
Too many, I agree.
But I am glad that Mr. Becker has presented all of this discussion that we need to consider, because it's no secret that the PD, there you go hitting that again, the PD and, and the fire department are both outgrowing that space.
Absolutely.
It's not in dire need today, but in five, 10 years.
It's going to be.
It's going to be, and unless everybody is okay with bonding for future capital investments, which I don't think we want to do.
I don't think either one of us want to do that, whether it's the fire board or the city council.
I agree.
So, I, 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 I'm, I'm still going to, going to agree with Councilman Lundin, I, I think going back to a dollar would be sufficient. If the fire district wants us to act as their, their bank and their escrow, then I don't think that's a bad idea. But, I, I think it would be fair for the chief to sit down with Mr. Becker and Ms. Wood, and go over this lease agreement, and go over the purchase of that building, and get all our cards, and, and, all of our cards on the table, get the air cleared, and we all need to be a team here, we need to move up and forward in the positive direction, as me and Chief Myers always say, in the city of Iscany, as a team, as a whole. I, I can't emphasize enough, there's no more stooping one another, because we're, we're a team.
Well, I'm not going to concur on this issue, so.
I mean, I agree with Paul that I think that if, if we're going to sell the building, then it might as well be done now, and, and the fire, or the, the police station could rent for a dollar until, until we have something figured out, but, but I, I do agree with you guys though, that if we're going to just solve the current problem, it should be a dollar, I mean, that's the, the right thing to do, is to move the lease to a dollar.
It was all a vendetta, that's all I can, I can't see any other reason.
I don't disagree with that, but even the chief wants to figure out how they can keep purchasing the building. I say, let's move forward with purchasing, if they pay whatever the purchase, whatever the lease payment is.
Councilman Burgley, I'm not disputing that.
What I'm saying is, if they continue to pay five grand, or whatever it is per month, we're still going to put that part towards the purchase agreement, and I agree with.
That's not necessarily true.
I agree with Mr. Becker, why move forward with two legal languages, why not just move forward with one, so.
So let, let the minds sit down at the table and figure it out.
Without going to the dollar lease, because we're going to put it towards the purchase agreement anyway.
But the problem is, it's going to be, I bet you it's going to be a minimum of four years before this can be reacted on.
But we're, but we're still going to put it towards the purchase price, I mean, whatever they pay, we're going to put it towards the purchase price, that's what I'm saying, so. You can roll your eyes and do whatever you want, I'm saying I disagree. It's not to, I'm not trying to burn the fire department, I think Chief Jankovic knows that I'm behind him, I was the one that ran in 2016, say, keep the fire department together, and he knows I'm behind him, I'm not trying to screw over the fire department. So, I'm just telling you my view, you asked my view, I gave it, I'll shut up.
I'm not telling you to shut up, Councilman Burgley.
No, I'm not saying you are, but I'm just saying.
All I, all I'm saying is, agree or disagree, you can tell me now, that was changed from a dollar to a crazy amount, for what reasoning?
No, I don't disagree, but.
It was vendetta.
Mr. Becker said, put it towards the purchase price.
And I'm not disagreeing with that, I've already said that, you could pay thirty-six thousand and one dollar, because that one dollar is covering their lease, and the thirty-six thousand dollars is going for their purchase price.
I get that, but I'm just saying, why not just spread it out, rather than come up with thirty-six thousand dollars at once, that's all I'm saying.
If that's what the fire district wants to do.
He just, he just was up here and said that's what he wanted.
Well, then what are you arguing about?
I'm not arguing about anything.
Okay, guys, let's move on.
Why do it twice, why do it like Mr. Becker said, that's all I'm saying.
Mr. Becker, Ms. Wood, I don't think anybody's going to disagree that we give you the authority to sit down with Chief Jankovic and.
No, I want to.
And hash out, and lay all the cards on the table, clear the air, you know our consensus is, is we want to work together as a team, and so does the fire district. Let's get it done.
Sounds good.
I concur.
E6, tree discussion.
All right, so I wanted to add this, mayor and council, to the agenda, because I just wanted to make sure that everyone was on the same page when it comes to what our city code allows and doesn't allow for in tree replacements. So whether it be a street project like we have coming up on Sixth Avenue, the street project that we had a couple of years ago on Palomino, if we have a water main break, if we have a curb stop leak and it's the city's fault, the city policy is that we do not replace trees. I just wanted to bring this up to have a discussion, if there's any further clarification that I need to have or give, or take away from the conversation that, because there was some, a public comment shared at the hearing for the Sixth Avenue project, that she was unhappy about it, one tree that was going to be removed from her property out of the right of way, and it's never been our policy to replace trees. There are some options that the council could consider, but there are some negative impacts that that would have across many different types of projects that could cost us a lot of money, so I want to know if there was any concern, or are we looking to change city policy on removing trees in the right of way for projects, or leave it the same?
The only concern I have on that fact is, when that tree probably was planted, there wasn't any setback at that point, back in that day, when those things were done, it didn't matter, and as time has progressed, it has changed. If they were just doing a street modification and not putting it in the sidewalk, she probably wouldn't have lost her tree.
I will add one other story that I can say, because I was out there, I don't know how many times this happens, similar situations, but I can recall off of Fourth Avenue, there was a curb stop leak, it was the city side of the curb stop, so it was our issue, she lost a beautiful tree way up in her yard, it had been leaking for who knows how long, her entire yard was saturated, it's better a tree than her house, however, nonetheless, she did lose a beautiful tree, which is the only tree she had in her front yard, and we did not replace that tree per city policy. Now, if we have other circumstances like that that come up in the future, maybe we want to have them make a request to committee of the whole, look at it case by case, but at this point in time, trees in the right of way, what do we want to do going forward?
That's that double-edged sword, because they're in the right of way. But, there again, like I said, at that time, it didn't matter, you know, those houses were probably built there on Sixth Avenue. You know, there was a lot of things that, in today's standards, wouldn't have happened back then. I guess we're going, I, I personally, I guess we'd have to have it on a committee of the whole as case by case study, or case by case issue.
Are we talking about a case by case, or is this a generality here?
Well, this is, kind of two, two both, one's in general, but this is specifically because of the Sixth Avenue project. I believe there's approximately a dozen trees that need to be removed, that's about, I believe, what Palomino was as well, I don't have the exact number, but those trees were marked and taken out as part of the project.
Then what happens is you replace one, because somebody said you would work the mayor over on replacing that tree.
Well, that's why I'm asking.
Now, now we have 11 other trees, that people are going to step forward and say, well, what about my tree? What about my tree?
I'd defer just to be fair across the board, if we are going to.
So then we're essentially place, replacing 12 of those trees.
Is that where we are, 12 trees?
It's approximately that, I believe it's no more than 12, it could be more like eight, but I can't say for sure.
Okay.
What does the cost to replace a tree?
Depends on the diameter, if you're, you could spend a couple hundred dollars and get a couple inch, a fo- up to four inch diameter tree, it depends on species a little bit as well, but if you're removing trees that are 12, 18 inches in diameter, you're talking lots and lots of money.
Thousands.
Thousands.
I mean, do we have to replace it with the same sized tree that we took?
I wouldn't think so.
I don't think so, I mean, I think.
You're going to probably spend about, on an average, to have somebody replace a tree, a two-inch diameter tree is going to be about 400 to 500 dollars per tree.
I mean, I think if it, if it makes folks happy, I mean, I mean, if we destroyed that lady's tree with our water, you know, I mean, the, the right thing to do would be to replace that, you know, whether it's, I mean, I know it's not city policy to do so, but, I mean, in a case like that, I mean, I would say, hey, that's, you know, sorry about that, we, we messed up, you know, let's take care of that for you, but, but I mean, I think replacing it with, maybe not necessarily the same sized tree, but at least with something, you know, I mean, that's, I think that'd be more than fair.
Couple of options to consider, one of them, because if you end up doing replacement with trees, there are some warranties, now you can give them the warranty, but inevitably you won't make everybody happy, they wanted the 12 to 18 inch, you gave them a four, a two inch, and they're disgruntled anyways, because, right, maybe rightfully or not rightfully so, they have a problem with it, they wanted exactly what they had, and you didn't give that to them, so you're not quite winning. The other thing is, if that tree does die, whether you gave them the warranty to take care of it, it's their responsibility, and I can say that this happens in terms of like yard work, we can, we can put sod down even, in some extreme circumstances of yard kill, that sod dies, even though it's impulsive that they are to maintain it, we get a call, they're unhappy. So, and those are things out of our control. Another thing to consider is that we could give just payment in lieu of taking a tree out, we could set a dollar amount in every project going forward, and we would have to define what projects, all just streets or what they were, they get a X per diem basically per tree removed from their property, we tack that onto our project, might factor that into the budget, bumps up that cost of that project, but then that's covered, and then a third.
Have you thought about that, what would, what would you, what did you come up with cost per tree, to do what you just said?
I'd, I would have to take some direction from council of, what size tree would you want to replace, and then I could come back with some numbers.
Okay, thank you.
I don't have that today. A third option would be to setting aside projects and individual properties, perhaps we look at having some kind of tree replacement assistance program, some cities have this, Mr. Becker is familiar with a program similar to this, and there may be some grant funding that, we just look at making it available to all residents within the city, if you're looking to add trees to your yard for whatever reason, we're going to try to get them a discounted cost to pass on to you.
I personally like option three, to where we're, we're giving it to everybody, and there possibly could be some grants that would help us fund that tree replacement fund.
It's possible.
And then, that way we're not singling out one person or 12 trees versus we're covering our whole city.
That sounds reasonable.
I don't think any other option would be fair on either side, besides that one.
I'm fine with that.
Yes, chief?
I may have missed it, was the tree roots part of the problem with why the water leaked?
No.
No, it's because the ground was saturated, it just went that far.
It wasn't from a water leak?
No, it was from sand swirling and created a hole. In the, where the, the, the curb stop connected to the pipe in the joint.
So the direction we're going to give is option three?
Leave the city policy the way it is.
Absolutely.
We're not replacing trees funding or with a tree replacement, but we'll look at a tree program for the entire city.
I think that's what we should do.
So that person that asked me at the last meeting, I should just refer to you then, and?
Yeah, I can't say that this is going to be at the top of the priority for immediacy of programs to be developed, because we don't have anything like that, that will take some staff time, but I will definitely add it to my list and hopefully get to it this year.
All right, let's move on to E7, the annexed parcel code enforcement discussion. Ms. Wood?
All right, I'm sharing this on behalf of Ms. Selman, so we had, had a couple conversations about what to do in terms of code enforcement for annexed parcels. I did include the draft ordinance and a table from the last committee of the hold, that has not changed, it's the same as was last month, but what the discussion was regarding last month was, do we want to look at these parcels as having some exclusions to some of the rules or exceptions, so to say, until the property changes hands? So Sheila drafted some questions for consideration regarding that, and I'll read these questions, but also, Mr. Becker had shared that at least one of those properties had already changed hands with the annexed parcels, so it's possible that we may have missed a transfer already. But here's some things that Ms. Selman would like us to consider, how do you track when ownership changes, utility billing is one way, and we have shared that, if they are updated in a timely manner, what if the current owner sells to a child or relative, does contract for deed or rent, would in addition to the house or garage trigger compliance? Can they add vehicles and trailers, et cetera, to their property going forward? How would you know if there were additional items stored?
So staff is looking for a direction on if we want to go with what we had discussed last time, still seek further discussion.
That bottom sentence there, did you, did you send out those letters, or is that still something that's going to happen?
Letters notifying the homeowners that discussions are taking place were all sent out, I believe we've sent them three times, this last time that they got sent, I think two or three, she did say that this will continually be discussed, but they will be notified again in writing when it goes to council, so they've been notified a few times.
They've kept in the, in the loop.
Yep.
Because that was per my request, I mean, I, I want to be as transparent as possible if we're going to make decisions on these, we should keep them informed as well.
Yep, good idea.
Which, somebody in the audience right now is one of those annexed that did get that letter, so, and if we were wrong, he would be jumping up correcting us right now, so.
I still think we should just go on, like we discussed about, until that property changes hands.
How are we going to know?
It's going to have to go through utility billing, or, it's going, they're going to have to register, if they register with, if they register a contract for deed, it's supposed to go through the county.
Let Mr. Becker talk about how it looks like when a transfer is on utility and timing.
Yeah, we're, we're always going to know, so long as they have any city, city utility service, even if it's just stormwater, we're, we're going to know, because in the end, the person selling the property has a clear interest in not having their name attached to that account anymore. It's a pretty rare instance that somebody sells a parcel and fails to make any provisions for getting that account switched over. Now usually it ends up, usually we end up have a title company that is playing the middle man in that role, but nonetheless, there's a clear incentive to do so.
Mr. Becker, is that what two and three are trying to address, when the, when the title wouldn't change hand, or the utility bill wouldn't change hands?
Yeah, I mean, that, that, those are kind of the subtleties of it, right, that, you know, you might have.
Even if, even if Mr. Becker rented to me, he's still not going to want that utility bill in his name, it would still have to be in my name, so.
Here, utility bills stay with the parcel. That's not true in every, every city, so, just because you're renting, you, we, we need to know that you're renting, right, you have to have the, you have to pay the fee, you have to have a, I think it's a biannual inspection, so we would eventually, we would, there's not really a scenario, we want to know eventually, but if somebody wants to hide it, or they have a rental agreement with a family member that, you know, is maybe not above board, it could be sometime before we would know.
I still think we should just go along with that, until they sell the property, or, and/or an addition, or building of a garage, or something like that.
Yeah, I, I agree, I think it should just be, if they sell the property and it changes hands, then, then that's when it should be enforced, and the rest of it, I don't think is really all that important.
Because most of those properties are large enough that they're going to fit within the stipulations that we had discussed prior, prior to anyway.
Yeah.
You know, and then let's face it, if the neighbor is, you know, getting fed up with the other neighbor having 25 cars in his yard, makes a complaint, then he's obviously not in compliance at that point.
Well, I mean, I think that's still, I don't, I forget what it was called, was it tier one or something like that zoning? Was that the, because it's still, that's still enforceable, I mean, even if we just keep the current rules that were in place when they were part of the township, you know, I mean, I think that should still be enforced, you know, completely.
Yes.
You know what I mean, and that would still prevent 25 cars from being parked out there, and.
Yep.
You know, rubbish everywhere and stuff like that, so, I still think we should enforce that, you know, fully, but I just think we shouldn't change it to, to what we're talking about until they sell.
Or they build a building, or add on.
Yeah, if they add on or put a garage on, I would agree with Councilman Lundin.
Because I mean, it's, it's, it's been a bad deal all along, and I feel sorry for those residents, and unfortunately, I wasn't here to just show my distaste in that from the get-go, but at that point, i- it's not a good thing, and I don't want to burden them with any more costs and due process to them to live on their life. They're already enduring enough costs, we don't think we need to force. They're already enduring enough costs, we don't think we need to force anymore.
I think this is the most fair way we could possibly do it.
So, just to make sure I'm hearing this correctly, so no enforcement except for what we enforced during tier one, which is of rubbish and trash and things like that, vacant or unlicensed cars, things that we did in tier one, yes, keep doing. Otherwise, the rest, wait until they change ownership. Mr. Becker's?
We, we do have that one parcel that's already changed is what I'm wondering about.
Okay, so on that one, if it's changed, then they would be to all, to come into compliant with us completely or come into compliant with the draft of the other modified rules which had the different acres on it?
First, first, when did that property change hands?
So, in nineteen, we started putting out the, the tax reimbursement checks and so I would do that twice per year. After I go through reconciled tax settlements, can rest assured that we've actually received the money, then I'll turn around, do the calculations, send those reimbursement checks back based on the annexation agreements. And when I went to issue a second check, it was clear from me double checking county records at that time that ownership had changed.
How long ago was that though?
Well, it'd be the end of twenty nineteen, right? Roughly?
I didn't, I didn't note the date, but it would have been when I would have sent the check. I'd have to double check.
You're doing it every six months if I recall right.
Basically, basically the first check's going to go in July, the next check's going to go in December is basically the.
So, somewhere between July and September, or July and December of twenty nineteen, it changed hands.
Yes.
So, I hate to say this, we really haven't settled on anything yet. So, that is that gray matter area there. I would have to say up to the point that we make this decision, if, say we were to make that decision tonight, this is it, done, cut dry.
So, from here forward.
Here forward.
If it changes hands, then, so when this decision is signed by Ms. Brooks and myself, then it would be implemented from there forward.
Yes, that's what I would say.
It, it, it sucks, but it is what it is. We didn't put anything in place. We're unfortunately a little behind on this, but I guess the new property only got a freebie.
And then I'll ask that other, the secondary, I understand that, thank you council, and then that secondary piece, after it does happen, does change hands after, when this is approved going forward, so sometime in April or after switches hands of ownership, are we then having them do exactly what we currently have in code or doing a revised version because those properties have larger parcels compared to a lot of others that we're doing something like we drafted in the past where we, like they can have, for example, more vehicles, they can have a bigger truck, they can have more chickens, things like that.
Yeah, then it would, I would believe it would fall into the larger property.
Larger property.
And I think we had a consensus on those numbers.
Yeah.
You know, we all talked about that, greater than two acres, you can do this.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so we're looking to do a combination of the two.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yes, when they sell that property, if this goes till April, then it's signed, sealed and delivered after April and they sell, changes hands and they have to go buy, buy.
The larger property ordinance.
Larger property ordinance.
I think I got it.
All right. All right, let's move forward to E eight, the credit card policy discussion.
I don't want one.
This one, even before he opens his mouth, I can tell you that this would be huge if we did this for Mr. Becker. Mr. Becker, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but currently what happens now is if Mr. Becker needs a credit card, he gets the credit card because he's in control of that. But if Ms. Wood needed that credit card now and he hands that credit card to Ms. Wood, not saying that he would, but he could copy those numbers down and why Ms. Wood had that credit card and purchase things, he could sneak out and purchase something too. And the way it looks is, well, Ms. Wood purchased that. Then there's, she's reliable, there's no accountability, it's kind of, it's kind of a mess right now. So, the way that Mr. Becker and I have been talking about it is why not get credit cards with Mike Becker's name on it, with Katie Brooks's name on it, with Josie Wood's name on it, with Travis Meyer's names on it? We put their names with the city of Isani. It was like a dual, it's like a corporate credit card really. So, now we're holding accountability. It's easier for Mr. Becker when it comes to, you'll get two different statements, one for that individual and then another statement as a whole.
I would get a, I would get a statement for each individual cardholder and a summary statement that would combine all of the cards.
So, it's not only easy for Mr. Becker to keep track of what's being spent, but when it comes audit time, it's easier for those, those auditors. I mean, it, to me, it's just, it makes sense. It's more easier for our finance director, it's more easier for our auditors and it's holding accountability to each individual for using a city credit card.
So, let's move forward, absolutely.
I agree.
Okay, I'll draft, propose a credit card policy and we'll have some, some details that I'll work out in there, you know, about, you know, if the card has cash back, where does, where do those proceeds end up at getting allocated? We'll arrive at a list of, you know, department heads and listed personnel that should have.
The only question that I'd have for you, Mr. Becker, is, and some people are like this, not saying that she is, but what if she, Ms. Brooks said, I don't want to hang on to that credit card, can you hang on to it? Are you willing to do that? I mean.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah.
Then I don't see an issue with this.
That's the one thing I have talked to some staff about, you know, what is your comfort level on this? And, and some staff have said, well, jeez, I don't, I don't want a card with my name on it. I don't want to be having that in my possession. My response to that is, well, then we do what we're doing right now. Yes, there is a card that has the, the public services director's name on it.
They'd still come to you essentially, but.
If he says, I do not want this in my possession, that is not a responsibility I care to have on a daily basis, twenty-four, seven, then we simply do what we're doing right now. It's in my possession. I keep it locked up, I keep track of it. And if he needs to use a credit card, he will come get his credit card with his name on it, I will sign it in, we'll sign it out, we'll sign it back in, do it exactly the way we're doing it. But at that, but even in that instance, that is a far improvement because right now we're not, even in that scenario, then we're not sharing credit card numbers among everybody. Right now, we don't have an issue, right? We have trustworthy staff that would not put fraudulent charges on the card, but if you run far enough forward in time, eventually even the best intentioned hirings, some, someday that will happen and we should simply have a plan in place that prevents that.
I don't see an issue with that. I, I don't know you guys anything to add, but I, I totally think we should do that.
Mr. Becker thought it well out, so.
I agree.
We've had that discussion more than once, Mr. Becker and I. We'll move on to E nine then, adding trails to Bluebird Park discussion. Ms. Wood?
Okay, this was brought up at the February twenty-fifth Park Record and Culture Board meeting, that it was brought forward for the board to discuss the addition of adding, or the addition of two paved trails over in Bluebird Park. One of them would be connecting the lot that used to have, it's asphalt pad on the north side of Bluebird Park, coming through the trees to the parking lot of BMX. The other one is on the, one of the southeastern parking lots connecting a straighter line from that south lot over towards the trail to BMX. Matt Sylvester did reach out and get some estimates. We would need formal quotes if we wanted to move forward. The one trail is approximately seventy-five hundred dollars. It's about a fifty feet path and that would, while I do see people walking through the grass and on the road, it's a considerable amount of money. And then the other one would be approximately sixty-seven hundred dollars. This would be unbudgeted, not planned, park improvement at this time.
So, they're asking us to straighten out one of the paths right now because it's squiggly right now, so God forbid they'd have to walk another twenty feet.
And I want to be clear, this request did not come from River BMX while they are in support of adding that trail, set, segment between the one parking lot, straight across the grass area, so they don't have kids walking on the road while they're supportive of that. They did not bring this forward to Park Record and Culture, I'm not sure.
Here's my concern about this. Here's my concern about this councils, as we add things, as we've talked about in that park, what if we tear that same path up that we just put in? And for us to straighten out a squiggly sidewalk right now, it just seems like, hey, you don't want to walk that because you're lazy? All right, I'll straighten that out for you. So, it's an extra few feet. I, to me, this kind of seems.
I ride my bike over it all the time and I have no problem with the squiggly line itself.
Perfect. I walk it.
Maybe we should tell them our plans for that area and maybe we look at it as time comes up with, with the other things that we're going to add and see if it fits in.
I, I, I think.
This time, why do it and then tear it up?
That's why I say, I think we leave it alone right now and with adding things in that park, things could change then, then maybe we talk about it, but not now.
I agree. I don't think we should do anything with it right now.
I agree.
Sounds good, thank you.
Moving on to E ten, painting the Redbird Fence Discussion. I can kind of touch base on this. I brought it to the staff's attention that if you've ever driven through Bluebird Park, the backside of that fence looks hideous. It looks like it's, it's wood, so it doesn't, but you go on the other side of the fence and they have it pretty painted with all their sponsors on it, it looks pretty cool. But the side that the public is seeing is, I mean, can we just paint it like a tan or?
Whose responsibility is that over there?
Now, that's what I, Ms. Wood, you're going to have to touch base from here on.
It's a Redbirds Ball Field Fence. It is their, the back side, they do have their sponsorship on there, but it is their fence. Matt Sylvester did reach out to them and ask them, they agreed that something could be done, it could be painted or stained or something. They had requested to use city equipment to do so. That it would not be allowed, we don't allow things that we've purchased to be just used by another group. We could offer to pay or that they, we could build them for that painting, however, we will charge by the fee schedule, I'm sure that they'd be able to find a cheaper painter than our public works staff because, you know, they're highly paid for other skilled things, not just painting, but.
But there's nothing really forcing their hand to paint it.
I'd have to dig into it and I'm going to ask for the expertise of Ms. Selman when she comes back. I know that we do have maintenance standards for things and for fencing, if they're decrepit, falling apart, if they had sections of panels down or they had holes in it and it was rotten, then there is something. Just aesthetics on there, I'm not sure if I do.
Isn't that park actually on city property?
It is on city property.
And are they leasing that from us?
For a dollar a year.
Okay, they can go get it painted, end of discussion. For that dollar a year, they can go paint the damn thing. I think if they look at, if you look at our lease agreement, they're supposed to maintain that property and that's part of maintain, maintenance.
The backside of it just makes the rest of the park look bad.
As far as I'm concerned, they can go get it painted.
That was, that was my only concern, was that we're, we're trying to make Bluebird the cool park, the general park, the, you know what I mean? We're, we're, we're going to start adding things to it, let's, let's start beautifying as we go here and that stuck out like a sore thumb.
I do believe we had them do some exterior work on one of their concession buildings or something at one time because we carried the insurance on that property as well for them and I know they had to do some update on that, so maybe that within the lease would encompass the fence and we will definitely look into that and reach out to them with what we find.
Sounds good.
Sounds good.
I just, I just want to add, I don't think there's anything wrong with being, it is our property, maybe giving them an incentive by saying, we'll chip in on the paint if you paint it.
We already chip in, we give them dollar lease.
I get that, but, but.
And we cover their insurance on their concessions then.
Okay, well, just an idea. I'm not saying we have to put a ton of money into it, I'm not talking, you know, we'll pay for all the paint, but they're young men, they could paint the thing themselves.
They could have a paint party, the ball team paint party.
Getting ready for the.
Check in with it.
Getting ready for the outdoor yacht house room.
Check every avenue, Ms. Wood.
Will do.
E eleven, discussion on funding for fireworks and float.
All right, we're going to take this in two parts. At first, as the fireworks, so as was directed at last cow, it was still looking to see a little bit of logistics and to see if we for sure had funding for something such as this. So, what they came up was that approximately it would cost six thousand seven hundred dollars to have a twelve-minute show, which is similar to what communities such as Brooklyn Park, Buffalo, Sartell have. And there is adequate funding within the park's budget that is currently there, so we could use some of that funding and allocate it to the fireworks if that is, as the committee and council would, so choose like to do. It would be on the night of the parade, so that Thursday evening, there'd be a little bit of staff involved with maybe some closure of roads and barricading off some of that fall zone area, otherwise it would be by the company that would be hired to do the fireworks.
Could we have the fire department there without charging us? Just to make sure we don't start a fire?
They're probably going to be there anyway.
Probably.
Didn't we used to have a fireworks show on Thursday night? Someone just brought that up to me today.
Yeah, Don Lornson was just telling me today that he used to, years ago, would go sit in the park and watch the fireworks.
There used to be during the rodeo.
And I said, boy, am I going to bring back memories, Don? And he just said, it would be nice to bring back things that were just cut, 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 as Don said.
So, staff will reach out if we have a consensus on this, staff will reach out and start looking at, because I'm sure there's contracts, agreements with the firework vendors and we'll bring that to council for a formal vote.
I like it. Now, the float thing, I, I brought the float up because I wanted it to be a, and Ms. Wood was very supportive of team building. However, when she did a survey, a anonymous survey to see how many staff would do it, the numbers were not good. So, not to mention that we would end up paying our staff, possibly overtime at that matter, to build a float, I'll be the first one to tell you fellas, I said, you know, I guess we don't get a float. I did want the city to be represented somehow, some way in that parade. I, I know that the Ford dealership, Hayford Ford has mentioned maybe donating a truck or we could use public works trucks, or we could use the police department, but we can get in, we can get the city in that parade some way, shape or form, or us, or them, or.
A combination.
A combination. Whoever wants to be in the parade, hey, more power to you, let's put you in the back of a Ford pickup and you're in the parade. We could do banners on the vehicles or what have you, but I don't know that, and building a float was my idea from the get-go, but I no longer think that's a good idea.
Okay.
Should we just do a Ford truck and?
I think that's what we should do. I think we should have the city in the parade, but I don't think we're in need of a float.
No, I agree. If it's going to cost too much money, it's not.
Too much time and money.
I've never been a fan of this site. So, but I don't want to pay people to be on the float. I mean, if they want to do it for fun, that's one thing, but, but I mean, is it really necessary to be in the parade? I mean, the whole city is the parade, you know, I mean, that's, that's kind of the city's representation is that, hey, we're putting on this great party here and come by Isani, it's a great town.
Why can't the city be a part of that fun party?
The parade has nothing to do with the city.
The whole party's in the city.
Yeah, but the city doesn't put that parade on, it's a chamber of comrades.
But they're using the city.
Well, they can use another city.
I guess they could use that for further discussion at another time, it's not going to happen, we're not going to do.
If they're going to donate a truck and the staff is going to do it out of the, just because they want to be there and it's going to be fun, then, then fine, but why pay them to?
That's another discussion for another day, but I think the float would be an ex nay.
Yeah, yeah. Full of stone.
Okay, staff will let this issue go and if council, a council member wants to bring it up in the future, let me know, otherwise we will not as staff.
Okay.
At this time.
Move on to E twelve, the emergency management discussion. Chief Myers.
All right, Mayor and Council, this is on our cow agenda, more importantly, because we have the two items that are going to go to council tonight that are going to be addendums to that agenda. One of them is an update from our pandemic plan, which was done in two thousand nine.
Can you pull your mic closer, please? Thank you.
You can barely hear you, chief.
All right, so one of them's an update to a pandemic plan, which was done in two thousand nine, and the other one's a continuation of operations plan, which is part of our emergency management plan. So, generically, just so you guys are aware, you have emergency management plan and how that works. When there's an emergency, a tornado or natural disaster, there's not time to get the council to make those decisions, so it gives administrative authority and that's already in our emergency management plan, so that's kind of the basis for an emergency management plan. Let's say that the tornado comes through and knocks down power lines, we need public works to come in, we need the authority to authorize the overtime, authorize maybe equipment rental to do so. So, that's what we have, our emergency management plan, which is already in place. So, these are updates. Now, the city of Isani, for some reason, does have the pandemic plan from two thousand nine, I talked to a lot of other cities that do. Now, the city of Isani, for some reason, does have the pandemic plan from 2009, I talked to a lot of other cities that do not. Difference in emergency on the pandemic plan versus the EOP, or generic emergency management plan, which every city has. Pandemic plan is different because it starts from zero, goes to 100 as far as your disaster. If you want to call a pandemic a disaster versus emergency management plan starts at zero, or sorry, 100, and you mitigate down to zero. They both work just as well, but we actually have the pandemic plan to go from, so that's why we chose to update that. You can read through it, the, we changed some of the schematics behind it. The biggest thing to look at is, you know, we still have the same critical priorities, which is ensuring potable water, ensuring the sanitary lift stations, ensuring the city streets are passable to emergency vehicles, ensuring general peace and order, and the act in concert with Isani County and according health agencies. So, those are our core functions of any city. So, that's, no matter what happens in any emergency management plan, that's our core functions that we're going for. Specifically, just as a offshoot update as far as what's a police department doing, as far as our operations, is you'll see every one of our officers are in uniform, including our investigator, because we don't know what the next endeavor is going to be. By next Monday, we'll have 150% increase in patrol officers working the street, which is a huge increase. It just happens that our training officers are being ready to be out on their own, so that's 150% increase in patrol that will start. It's, there's one starting at the end of this week and one at the beginning of next week that are off-training. So, that's a pretty good increase. As far as what we've been doing, starting last week, is having daily contact with emergency management from Isani County. Myself and Josie met with Department of Health in the morning yesterday, as well as emergency management. Isani County Health Department is kind of the lead as far as the health side of it. Our role on their pandemic plan is the government side of it, as far as what services we need to provide, which are those five core services. Do you guys have any questions in general?
This was so outdated. It came, when the chief looked into it, I only know because I asked earlier today, but 2009 was the last time this was updated. So, the chief did his due diligence and made sure it was up to today's date with the, the academic, I can't even say it. The pandemic, there we go, that we have out now. The chief thought this was necessary to update this. Thumbing through this, I, and knowing the chief very well, I don't see any issues in what your plans are. You and Ms. Wood have attended everything the county's put out. I, I guarantee you, if the state came out tomorrow with something, you two would be there. You're going to follow and do your due diligence, I mean, the police chief is the emergency management director as well. Hopefully, the county has meetings that our former chief only attended two and never showed up again. So, hopefully, you will do your due diligence, and you know what, I shouldn't even say hopefully, because I, I know better, you'll be there. I don't even see a problem in this, I guess what I'm asking you, chief, is what do you need from this council? I think, I think, to be honest with you, I think this should be, if you need a, a motion, I think this should be pushed immediately to tonight's council.
It will go to tonight's council.
Okay.
I just wanted to bring it to the committee, so if you had any discussion pieces here.
And I, and I would entertain you gentlemen to read through this.
And I guess the only thing I want to advise council and more so the public as far as, you know, as our role as the public safety entity, I mean, that, we've been preparing for that since last week. All our officers have been preparing for that for last week as far as how we're operating, we're changing our operating structures. We even have contingency plans going out. We don't know what tomorrow brings or what next week brings, but we have plans in effect, even scheduling rotations, even separation of schedulings, meaning this core group of people don't have any contact with this core group of people. So, we have a lot of contingency plans, but because we don't know where we're going, we're playing it, we're trying to stay one step ahead of planning, but we can't stay one step ahead of what's actually going to happen. As far as the public, and the timing worked out really good as far as our staffing, as far as the officers that were on field training, that they are done now.
And, and with, with that, you said one was done this week and one was done next week?
One's done Thursday, and actually, one's done Friday.
Oh, so it's both this week?
Both this week, so.
So, why couldn't you just say Thursday for both?
Because the one doesn't actually come back to his solo shift rotation till Monday.
Gotcha, okay.
So, it's how it works. So, with that, and then we have the school resource officer on patrol as well, so that's the other. So, I have three additional patrol people that we didn't have before.
Has Chief Jankovic seen copies of this?
Probably not.
Can we supply him with them?
Well, you sure can.
I think he's just as part of the emergency response team as any of, any of us are.
Well, I mean.
To some extent, I mean, the, this emergency manage, the, the pandemic plan has a lot more to do with our internal structure as far as administrative authority, it gives me the authority, say, to take my officers and make them work 16-hour shifts.
Right, which I'm not beyond that, but if, if, if the emergency plan involved the fire department, you should have the right to call him and say you need him as well, and work collaboratively together.
It will work that way, and that's, depending on how far we get into it, once the county declares an emergency and invokes their emergency management plan, then the emergency manager from the county, and then we'll all fall under that structure. One more thing to mention in that was, I just talked to county emergency management, just so you're going to watch on the news tonight, there's going to be other cities, I talked to one of their emergency management directors that are declaring states of emergency. They're not doing it for any, like normally you do that for FEMA reimbursement pieces of that, but because the governor's already declared that, that's not a concern. The reason they're doing it in their cities is because they're running under a general emergency management plan. They don't have a pandemic plan, so in order to evoke their administration.